Good evening, welcome to the September, Monday, September 12th session of the Village Board meeting. All our meetings are held at Village Hall on the second floor. If you'd like to call in tonight, the number is 769-1677. Our next work session will be Monday, September 19th at 7:00 PM and our regular meeting will be followed by a regular meeting. We're just having a work session, pardon me, just a work session on the 19th and a regular meeting will be September 26th at 8 o'clock with a work session at 7:00 PM. I just have to announce a few things. Patty, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you if you had the Pevac flyer that I sent you earlier today.
You know what, I did print it.
Okay, wonderful, so I'll wait on that. But we haven't really met since Tropical Storm Irene hit the village and I just want to, I'm sure a lot of people in Pleasantville feel this way, but I'd like to just thank the Office of Emergency Management that we've put together here in the village of Pleasantville. I know it was Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday before the storm and Chief Love asked me, "Come into my office, I want you to see a few things," and he had already started preparation to put together our Office of Emergency Management, which was staffed on Saturday night. The village of Pleasantville declared a, the mayor declared an emergency on Saturday of, what was that day? Anyway.
Saturday.
It was some Saturday in September. And we declared a state of emergency prior to the storm hitting and our Office of Emergency Management opened right here on the second floor at 9:00 PM that night and it was staffed by all-night by our village administrator. Patty, thank you so much for pulling an all-nighter with your air mattress.
Yeah, I was a little here.
And when you put together an Office of Emergency Management, you need to have the required staff, which was our superintendent of the Department of Public Works, Steve Johnson, who did an incredible job here, of course, our Chief of Police, Love, the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps, Kelly O'Connell was here, Kerry Connell, pardon me, and also a representative from the Pleasantville Fire Department, our building inspector, Steve Butifuko, no, not building inspector, our co-enforcement officer, Steve Butifuko.
And building inspector, he came at 6:00.
And our building inspector, Mytesta, came at 6:00 AM. I know that our DPW department was out cleaning out drains at 3:00 in the morning and they did the most unbelievable job and then followed up, which, we had a number of meetings prior to that, setting up the office, a list of emergency numbers, we had a liaison number and person with ConEdison. The Westchester County's Office of Emergency Management was incredible and they did two conference calls a day with municipalities, what do you need, what are you not getting. ConEd did the same thing, worked very closely with Steve Johnson and our entire staff, I just can't say enough. I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but I was also very, very proud of the people of Pleasantville because, working for the county, I received a lot of phone calls from a lot of different people in District 3 and nobody from Pleasantville because our mayor, I think, did an unbelievable job informing everybody all the time. If you had power, he was getting emails out, this is what's going on, talk to ConEd today, this tree is being removed and ConEd was going through the process that they need to go through when there is an emergency like that and that is to clear the way for emergency vehicles, that's the most important thing, that if anybody needed any help, an emergency vehicle could get through. But I just want to commend everybody involved. It was a very professional job and I was, I was very, very impressed by everything that you've done.
There was also, I think at the height, something like 700 and some Pleasantville residents didn't have power and a lot of those people are relying on Powerford Computer and all that stuff. So the library set up extra tables in the basement.
That's right, yeah.
And for days, for several days, the library was just packed. In fact, people were packed, were parking in the middle school parking lot and using the library, parking all the way through, it was just like Grand Central Station and there was the Wi-Fi.
Right.
So the job they did was just terrific.
Yeah.
If you went down to the basement, which is usually a community room, it was just, it was like the New York Public Library reading room down there, it was great.
But yeah, it was in the typical fashion of Pleasantville community, everybody stuck together and they helped one another out and there was a lot of picnics going on, a lot of going over to somebody's house to take a shower and not, they just really stuck together. And ConEdison had promised that most of Pleasantville would be back on Thursday night. We had a good percentage, thank you Patty, a good percentage of them go back on Wednesday and in the more difficult areas. It was, it took a longer time because we needed telephone poles, we needed transformers and as you know, crews were coming from all over the United States to help us, the whole northeast out and we were part of that. So again, Patty, I can't thank you enough, you were such a big part of that and I was just in two different emergency management meetings and I just, the professionalism of everybody involved was really quite impressive.
Quite, well, I just want to make a comment, the Pleasantville community was fantastic.
I was just saying that.
And I'm sorry I missed it because people really understood, you know, the gravity of the situation and really understood where we had to prioritize things and were very patient and we appreciate it because we really.
They were so patient, it was amazing.
We really did the best we could with the resources we had to make sure everybody stayed safe and that was the goal.
Yep, and that was the goal, that was.
Other than power outages and tree, we get all that, you know, it's disturbing flooded basements and, you know, you know, and power outages, but people are alive and we're all here to talk about it, that was the goal.
That's right. And you know, people, people were saying, "Well, do you think you overreacted a little bit?" You know what, I'd rather have people tell us you overreacted than we underreacted. So when they were talking about getting boats, it was a little nerve-wracking, but we didn't need the boats. Well, we did a little bit in some sections, but fortunately, people were okay there. I'm going to go back to the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps collecting items for the fire departments up north that have been devastated from Irene and the floods that have taken place up north. And they have a flyer out, I thought that they were going to have this online, maybe we could post it as well, but they're collecting items that the fire departments and the ambulance corps need up north and there's a whole list from work boots, work gloves, dust masks, goggles, those types of things. They need water, they need military-ready patches, the MREs, mops, bleach and cleaning supplies, shovels, they're collecting them at 48 Marble Avenue, which is the old Pevac headquarters and you can drop anything off there from today through the 16th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM and on the 18th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And if you have any, they don't really put a number on here, but you could contact the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps if you have any other questions. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I had the pleasure, and I don't know if you guys got to see, everybody had recognized the 10th anniversary of the terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001, on yesterday, but last week, the Jacob Burns Film Center previewed the documentary From the Ground Up, which was produced by Andrea Garberini, who lost her husband, who was a New York firefighter, on 9/11. She lives in the village and she produced this documentary, it's a 30-minute documentary profiling the lives of five widows and what they have done in the 10 years since that great loss. And it was an incredibly moving film and I urge everybody, if they can, to, you could order the DVD. It's showing on PBS, it was on Oprah Winfrey had a, on her network, showed it and interviewed Andrea and they, all of the widows were there on Thursday night and participated in a question and answer after it. Did you get to see it?
I did and you can actually go to the website, fromthegroundup.com or something.
Yes, that's what it is.
Just go to From the Ground Up and it actually lists there, if you go to the website of the film company, they tell you where it's going to be on TV. It's on various channels.
Right, yeah, it is all over the country.
So it's easy to, not easy, but it's, you can still, you can see it, so.
It was really an amazing, it was, wasn't it? It was terrific and a lot of people came together yesterday in the village of Pleasantville and it was really a solemn day, but one of great comfort for a lot of us that we're together and we're together that day as well, so I urge everyone to go see that. Does anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we have oral communications, I don't know if Michael isn't here, Bloom?
I don't see him here, but I will call him and invite him to our next meeting. I know he was preparing to speak about the road race.
The road race.
That he is trying to coordinate.
Is that progressive?
It has been, I think.
Great.
You know, he was here to, he was coming to tell the board, you know, about final plans, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think we coordinated a date, we'd met and created the route. We were, I think our logistics were all set, I know he was just working on some fundraising on his end, so.
Michael Bloom is a soon-to-be 13-year-old from Pleasantville who is for his bar mitzvah, is it a?
Bar.
Bar mitzvah, I'm sorry. He is organizing a charity 5K run walk in honor of Tina Gambino, the Reflection Scholarship and it's going to be a great, great event and we'll have details for you soon. The other oral communication was the revised sanitation schedule update. Do we have anything on that or we?
I do. At our next meeting, September 26th, we'll have a full presentation because that week we'll be releasing letters to all Pleasantville residents that have sanitation service with the village of Pleasantville, not the commercial properties, but just residential properties, about changes in their schedule. And those changes will go into effect on October 10th.
Okay, so look out for that and of course.
Most people won't see any change in their schedule, but there will be some areas where we will be changing the date of the trash pickup for the most part. So that is to accommodate the fact that our department has downsized from six full-time equivalents to four full-time equivalent employees and in order to accommodate that type of workload, we needed to, we needed to break up the routes. So we're changing our sanitation routes. People will have the same number of collections, the same type of collections, so with respect to service, nothing is changing, but by changing the date of collection, we're able to save a considerable amount of money. So that's what we're working on.
So we'll look for that and that will of course, not only be discussed at our meeting, but it'll be posted on the website and.
Right, I'm hoping on that night there'll be a presentation from Steve Johnson just to talk about, you know, and answer questions.
Okay, good, all right. Do we have any other oral communications this evening?
I think we have, somebody had some information, certainly, yeah.
If you have something that you would like to talk about, you certainly come on up, say who you are and where you live and sorry, I know, this is like everybody's worst nightmare.
I had no idea what I was getting myself into.
Well, welcome.
My name is Barbara Reynolds, I live at 105 Columbus Avenue. I have two children, an eight-year-old and a six-year-old, so they go to the Mount Pleasant School District. So they've been going to the bus stop, which our school crossing guard is actually here, she came just to give support and they've been closing the road, I believe it's on one of your resolutions tonight and that's why I came tonight.
Garrigan, yes.
Garrigan, right, so the school bus stop, it gets a little confusing because the school bus stop has been for 30 years, 50 years, hearing different numbers, at Garrigan and between Saratoga and Madison. And so the crossing guard has been closing that street to vehicular traffic and just, you know, so the buses can come and pick up the kids and go around the block. There are other ways for the cars to go, it's just that for the elementary schools that get picked up more particularly versus the middle and high school, I just felt it wasn't very safe for the street to no longer be closed because there are at least 20 children that are being picked up and a lot of those children have younger siblings, so it's a very busy street. And I know, like especially with the flooding that happened this past week, it was insane the way, because that's the way people come through to get down south from Pleasantville and north, they come through Sunnyside, they come through Meadow and down Saratoga and down Garrigan to get out to Broadway. And it was, you know, I just couldn't imagine if she didn't have it closed, how much crazier it would have been. So I had gotten a petition together and so I just had, I don't know who I give this to, it's just.
Judy, the clerk.
Judy will take this, clerk, but thank you.
And the petition is.
The petition is just, it's just other parents of children who were at the bus stop that feel strongly that they don't want the street to no longer be closed.
So where do the kids congregate?
Right now they're congregating, no, they're congregating at the old chapel.
Right, outside the old.
Right, at the side entrance to the chapel, right.
Which is actually pretty narrow, there's a narrow sidewalk.
Well, it's actually, there is a sidewalk there, there are some steps there, because the reason I started saying it gets confusing is because when we got the letter saying where the bus stop was, the letter actually said that the bus stop was going to be at Saratoga and Columbus, not Saratoga and Garrigan, which everybody figured was a misprint because it had always been there, but I was like, my goodness, if you changed the bus stop there, it would be worse because there is no sidewalk there, there is no, you know, it's all private properties and, you know, so now you're forcing people to wait on the street, you know, and if you don't close.
Barbara, what letter did you get? The letter referring to?
From the school district.
From the school district, okay.
Right, if there's a school district, like the bus route, because they changed the bus routes because they consolidated a few stops and whatnot.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
So it was, you know, so the first day, I'm going to tell you, even the crossing guard said, "What are you talking about? It's, you know, it's here, it's always here."
So Patty, what led to this whole thing? Why is there a change?
Because.
Public Safety Committee took up this issue, I'm not really sure how it got on their agenda.
Well, you need a law to close the street, there's no juris, there's nothing, no one has ever passed, the street was just closed.
But I mean, my question is, you know, we're making some action here, the change in the status quo, what?
I'll read you the letter.
I don't know what's.
"The Public Safety Committee and the Village Board have agreed to change a condition to a school crossing post. The effective change will be that Garrigan Avenue will no longer be closed from Saratoga to Madison for school crossing. There is no law authorizing this closure and committee believes it is unnecessary closure that is affecting the even flow of traffic through this area. The opening of this road will begin at October 1st." And it's just, please have it posted.
I mean, my question still stands, what, you know, is it that, that the traffic is bottled up there because they have to go around like they do, which I've been down there at that time of day, I'm not sure that I noticed that.
I think the Public Safety Committee could answer that better.
But I mean, I understand if we, it's not.
Did you read the report from the Public Safety Committee?
Yeah, I did, but just because there's not a law there, I mean, we could make a law there just as easily as, you know, stop it, we could start it as easily as stop it.
But the question, I think the bigger question from a vehicle and traffic perspective is, you know, is it legitimate action to shut a public road for the purposes of waiting for a bus to come to discharge and pick up students because they do that a lot all around the village and there's no other street that's closed for that purpose.
And you would say that.
Well, they do that because, I mean, Pleasantville doesn't have school busing.
Right.
You know, so it's really just that particular area of the village of Pleasantville and it is very densely populated that they're going, you know, I mean, like I said, there are 20 children going on the two buses going to, and that's why my more concern is more for the elementary than for the middle and high school, but there are 15, I think, going on the Hawthorne, which is the younger school, and then there are seven or so going on the next bus, you know, and there are quite a few younger children, you know, and it's just trying to keep them all contained for safety.
Your concern though is that the neighborhood wasn't consulted about this and you saw it come up on the agenda?
Well, it, we heard a rumor, you know, and it was just that, I guess, status quo had always been that this road had been closed, you know, for the safety and now it's being changed and, you know, nobody was notified, you know.
If I remember correctly, there was a complaint from neighbors.
Okay.
Other neighbors and that's why it was brought to Public Safety.
I don't know how it originated, but frankly.
That was my recollection of it, is that.
I wouldn't be surprised if somebody driving, you know, I mean, because I can see how, oh my gosh, this road is closed again, you know, but you have to go around the block, you know, it's not.
I did it for 12 years, I never bothered anyone.
Right, right, you know, I mean, it's not, to me, it's like, it's not, I didn't think as a driver that it's a huge inconvenience versus being a parent of a very young child who, you know, I worry about the safety and beside the fact that that street coming up is very busy at times, you know, when, and I had actually.
Dropping off for the high school and all the people that are, live in the area, you know, off Broadway, Lake Street, all of those people come through there to drop their kids off at the Pleasantville schools and it is very, there's a lot of traffic, there is.
But to cut to the chase, you know, you haven't had an opportunity to air your views and your neighbors to the Public Safety Commission from your perspective, so why don't we hold this over and refer it back to the Public Safety Commission?
I don't have a problem with that.
And have them get in touch with you and either through you with the other folks on the petition or with all the folks on the petition and air this thing out further before.
I have all their addresses, we'll invite them to the next Public Safety Committee, but we'll have a meeting where we know we can get people to.
Yeah, it sounds like your whole side of the story hasn't been factored in and it might make a difference, it might be a better solution.
It just kind of got thrown at us, you know, wait, oh, I'm sorry, it's not being closed anymore, you know?
Yeah, I think that's right.
I mean, it's not necessarily a huge thing, but you know, when you think about all these little kids.
No, it's a huge thing to you, that's not a problem.
It's a big.
And so we'll table it and we'll alert you to when there's another Public Safety meeting, okay?
Thank you, Brian. Can I just say thank you to all of you for your public services, much appreciated.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, are there any other oral communications? No. Okay, so resolutions, Steve, 184.
Resolve the pre-check registered date September 12th, 2011, covering check numbers 70352 through 70479, has been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $157,881.5. Water fund, $8,199.22. Capital fund, $53,030.15. Refuge fund, $10,772.90. Pool fund, $3,550.30, for a total of $233,433.62. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments, concerns? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, 185.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, August 22nd and they are hereby approved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Stephen, 186.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following block party requests. Dorrows Lane, Saturday, September 17th, 4:00 to 12:00 midnight, 4:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. Grove Street, Saturday, September 17th, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, 187.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the village treasurer, hereby appoints Jason Hoffman to the position of intermediate account clerk at a salary of $53,434, effective September 15th, 2011. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Second.
Comments, which I will explain this bit, that this is replacing a, this is not a new position, this is replacing a retiring.
Retiring.
A person that's retiring from the village.
So said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks, which one is it?
It's always 52.
Is it?
I always take advantage of the full probationary period, yes.
Strange wording.
I know, but that's civil service, it gives us some opportunity to, you know, but we always go 52 weeks.
Yeah, that's good. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're tabling 88, 188, Stephen, 189. Right?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby designates the village administrator as a liaison to the Sawmill Advisory Board. Second.
I have a, it's the Sawmill Basin Flood Advisory Board, just that one correction.
I'm excited, I'm going to get a little pin, I'm sure.
I hope you do, you get the apple pin.
The length of the title is always inversely proportional to the amount of influence on wheels.
Thank you, I'm not the grand, high-exalted mystic ruler.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Brian, 190, please.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Jacob Burns Film Center for use of the village's new municipal parking lot behind the post office for a special event from September 12th through September 17th, 2011, and further suspends use of the Cooley-Manville Municipal Parking Lot on Saturday, September 17th, 2011, and further resolve that the Board of Trustees authorizes the temporary suspension of parking meter regulations on Saturday, September 17th at the following locations. Suspension of metered parking on Marble Avenue in front of the Jacob Burns Film Center, suspension of 40 off-street parking spaces within the Manville Road Parking Lot, and suspension of on-street parking regs, north side of Manville Road from Grant Street to Pleasantville Road from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and further resolve that the police chief is hereby authorized to tow all vehicles in violation of these temporary parking restrictions.
Second.
I have a couple of questions. How does this affect other businesses at this time of the night when you're suspending all of this parking? For instance, the Iron Horse Grill, other restaurants in the area?
Well, the plaza's open for business for the balance of the business community and so are all the other on-street.
The Wheeler, Wheeler Avenue, so if someone's going.
Yeah, Wheeler Lot, Bedford Lot, these are all available, the only lots that are not available that are open now for the public are the lot behind Dunkin' Donuts, which is the Manville Lot, that's it, that's really the only lot.
But what about the off-street, the metered parking on Marble Avenue in front of the Jacob Burns Film Center?
That's only two spaces right in front of the theater.
Okay.
But they need that for drop-off.
So that's only two spaces?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the Manville Lot, suspension of on-street parking, north side of Manville Road from Grant to Pleasantville Road.
There may be three or four spots there now that are regulated by hours, these are across.
Are those the 12-hour spots that are there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, they're not metered.
Pardon me?
This is where Lamb Design is, all the way up toward.
Does Lamb Design know that's 3:00 on a Saturday, they're not open anyway?
It's not going to, shouldn't bother.
Okay, I know they use that for Farmer's Market, right?
This isn't their lot, this is, this is on Manville Road.
Okay.
So this is like across from Dr. Lagun, the opposite side of Manville, across from Valvoline.
Right.
And there aren't many spaces there.
There's not a lot of spaces there, okay. And is the village getting any reimbursement for?
About $2,700 in parking fees.
In part, so they're paying for the parking that we would normally have in revenue there? Okay.
This is for the.
Gala.
Gala, the tenure gala where Steven Spielberg will be coming to be honored by the Burns.
I think that he should meet with the village board before he.
I think it's very exciting.
Okay.
He asked to meet with you.
He should have asked to meet with me, seeing that I feel like Alexander Haig these days.
That's crazy, I mean, they should have, they should have something for the press, I mean.
They should have something for the village government.
Wouldn't you say, Judy? We'd get in trouble for that.
Press in.
I'm surprised. You know, you would probably have to wear pants, so, I don't know, and you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to wear your baseball hat, so you would probably.
You could do with a med hat. Yes, you could wear a med hat.
I don't think Steven Spielberg's wearing a baseball hat that night.
So bad, if you wear pants. Mindy, I think you, I mean, people can't see him, you better.
I mean, not shorts.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. You got those knees sticking out there?
All of them.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Stephen, 191.
I love it.
I resolve the Board of Trustees approves the following budget amendments to increase revenue and expense for day camp, from revenue of day camp fees, $9,000, to part-time day camp employee, from day camp fees, $3,580, to camp transportation for a total of $12,624. Appropriate general fund balance to cover Wachovia tax cert and workers' comp. The amount to increase is $23,417 to judgments and contractual services, $27,402 to employee benefits, workers' comp. To fund over-budget accounts, an amount of $6,049 would come from contingency to miscellaneous charges, debt service.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, I didn't give you comments, you don't have any comments?
No.
All right, they're rushing me along here, 192, Brian.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby awards the bid for photovoltaic solar array installation to Solar Liberty Energy Systems in the amount of $173,250. Said award is subject to the recommendations of the project engineer and submission and approval of insurance certificates and performance and payment bonds.
Second.
Comments?
Yes.
Is this the DPW roof?
This is a DPW roof project. We...
The question I had, I don't remember, it was Tom Riley who sort of brought this and started. What company was his?
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, these bids went to Briar Cliff to be opened, as you remember, we're in the IMA with Briar Cliff. I don't know if he's affiliated with any of these companies.
Yeah, something...
They could have changed their name, because it's not any of the ones that are listed here.
Well, he just helped us get the funding, the federal funding. He helped a tremendous amount. But he wasn't, he wasn't involved in actually...
Well, he would have been if he had, if he had, he won the bid.
Yeah.
Well, I don't even see his company listed. He may have changed, you know, a lot of times they change, or they're different subsidiaries. He may be on this list.
But I just think, regardless, and, I mean, it's pay attention to the fact that we don't know if he's, is Tom Riley's, who's a village resident, but, you know, we all owe him a debt of thanks in any case.
He did, he did a wonderful...
To bring us to the table on this and to...
He did a wonderful service, because he brought it to our attention.
He did a wonderful job.
That's right.
Yep. You're absolutely right.
I thank him.
Okay. So any other comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Stephen, 193.
Result of the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to know it's a public hearing for Monday, September 26th, 2011, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, 80 Wheeler Avenue, to hear comments as it pertains to amending the zoning code to add provisions for temporary uses in the A-1 zoning district.
Second, if Brian?
Second.
This is a public hearing amending a village zoning code. Here you go. This is it?
That is what it will look like when it's...
Okay.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Patty, why don't you explain it?
Oh, I knew that would happen.
I can explain it, but I think you'd probably be...
No, I'm just teasing you. I guess you could.
I don't have a legal duty here, so...
We've been, we've been asked to find a remedy for businesses that may want to do things on their property that are not specifically permitted in the zone that the business operates in. And the board struggled with this request, because it felt that, you know, zoning text amendments really need to have a better public good, more so than a private good, or, you know, a rationale, you know, that would serve the general interest of the village and not just a particular property owner. However, we did, I think, collectively agree that there should be ways to allow people to do things on their property that are incidental uses, that are not harmful, that really have very little impact, provided that those uses are reviewed by the planning commission, you know, for just the incidental things that a site plan would typically be reviewed for. And the means by which we agreed to allow these things to happen is by a permit use other than a right that a zoning amendment would have allowed, you know, a property owner to enjoy as a matter of land use. So this local law was drafted by your village attorney, which basically would allow an applicant in the A-1 district, since that's a district that we were talking about, to come in for a temporary permit to allow a certain use to occur on their property for a limited period of time, subject to renewal and subject to review. Basically, that's it. The example I can give is that we did have Laduka Auto body of repair petition for used car sales. And instead of having a zoning text amendment to allow for used car sales, the board, through this type of legislation, would be able to consider a permit to allow used car sales for a limited period of time and under certain, you know, constraints. So this was meeting, you know, I think, a situation in the middle, and coming up with a solution that is the best solution we could at this time without going through some other environmental and...
Okay, so the...
This looks really simple and straightforward. I think this is a, this is a good...
It's a lot cleaner than what I thought it would be.
I don't know if you've seen it yet, David, but...
Have you? Have you?
You're welcome to come and say something on the record. The hearing won't be until the end of the month, obviously.
I'll be there.
That's okay, nice to see you.
You have to introduce yourself, tell everybody who you are.
Yes, I am. Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Cooper from Law Firm of Zerran &amp; Steimetz, representing Laduka Auto. We were the initial petitioner in this matter, still a petitioner in this matter. What we have done is we've originally sought a special permit that would allow accessory used car sales with a, sorry, principal repair. After a couple of meetings with your board and consultation with council, as well as consultation with the planning commission, what we've now petitioning for is a temporary permit in the A-1 district. And one of the things I just want to add to what Patty was describing is that the uses that would be permitted are very limited to essentially uses that are already permitted in the A-1 district, just maybe not in the order that we're seeking. In this case, for example, a used car sales shop is allowed to repair, you know, repair cars as an accessory use. We're seeking to reverse that, a repair shop to allow accessory sales, and in this case would be very discreet. The only reason why I rushed up to the mic, other than to get myself on TV, is to just ensure that procedurally before, or at least tonight, that I make sure that the county has the newest draft of the local law, or at least it's going to be distributed either tonight or tomorrow, as well as the EAF, just to make sure that that's done before the public hearing.
The EAF? I don't think Joel prepared an EAF.
Well, no, we've prepared an EAF, which has carried through since the first original petition, but if you need another copy, I can certainly email you.
Can you send that to me?
Sure.
Thank you. So the public hearing is Monday, September 26th at 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
Right here. Same time.
Right here.
Same bat station. Thank you very much, David.
We'll see you then.
Okay.
Thanks for your hard work, David.
Okay. So did we approve this, Judy?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Patty, could I just ask quickly, is it likely that the county comments will be received prior to the public hearing? And I'm not sure they actually have to be received...
It's likely.
Prior to the public hearing.
Come on down, David.
But we need to have them before we make the decision.
It's highly likely, since it's a very simple law.
And technically, technically, the county's actually already commented and said this is a local issue.
Yeah, they have.
But under your code, before you have a public hearing, you need to just distribute the local law, or the copy of the local law. So just to make sure that procedurally, you can go forward with your public hearing on the 23rd, I want to make sure that that procedural prerequisite is done.
They're very good with turning these around. This is...
Yeah, yeah. And they have, they've actually already commented, but just make sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We have nothing else? We're going to call it a night. The next meeting is September 19th, which is just a work session, and the next regular meeting is September 26th. Have a good night.
You know, if I could say...
Go Dolphins, beat those, beat those Reds, those Patriots, please.
The best part about the hurricane, if I may, the best part is that...
There is a best part.
Go back to the hurricane. And you said it.
What?
That DPW, and I got this, this is the biggest comment, that DPW is going around picking up people's branches regardless of where they fell on their lawn. And they were, and our guys were going down the sides of houses and saying, can I take that? Can we clean that up? This was, this was, I think, almost Pleasantville at its finest.
It really was. I'm telling you, you should have heard the phone calls I was getting in the county.
That's right.
It was ugly.
And it wasn't...
They deserve it.
They were out the next day and...
They deserve the compliments and thank you.
Over and over and over. It was a great moment, so.
All right. Just to put on the record that it was Brian that extended the meeting another four or five minutes, not me. Okay. Good night, everybody.